And I'd like to open the public hearing for C-24, which is Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that $27 million is appropriated in addition to the $3 million previously appropriated by vote of the City Council on August 15, 2019, and the $2 million previously appropriated by vote of the Council on August 10, 2020, for the purpose of constructing and equipping a police station, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Mayor, is authorized to borrow such amount and issue bonds or notes, therefore, under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, or any other enabling legislation, and that the Mayor and/or the Treasurer are each authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project and this vote. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. So I am David Cormier, the Chairman of Finance, and here this evening is Counselor Pauline Cormier, the Clerk of Finance, and the third member, Counselor Angelini. First, I would like to ask if the Comptroller is here and would like to come in for this public hearing.
Before you start, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We have a member that wants to do this. We have a member that wants to, um, yes.
A member that wants to participate remotely, and the clerk is getting her on the phone.
Okay, we'll just pause a moment until that, until that happens.
So it should be stated publicly, and it should be part of the minutes, that Counselor Frida is going to participate remotely with respect to this particular item, C-24, and she can hear us, apparently, by television, and we need to be able to hear her as well. And any action later will be taken by roll call, which it would be anyway.
Did you already give me your document?
Yes. Hello. Awesome. Hold on one second. All right, I'm going to put you on speaker, Claire, so you can participate with us remotely for the hearing.
All right, you want me to sit now or wait?
We can hear you.
You don't want to wait? The hearing's going on now?
Yep.
Oh, okay, so you're ready to speak now?
We, David, just, Counselor Frida, the Chairman just announced the public hearing and invited the Mayor and Comptroller in as part of the public hearing, so we're ready to start now.
All set. Okay, so, thank you, Mayor and Comptroller for being here. I know, Jen, we had a conversation earlier, and I had asked you, you know, basically, this is a loan order, and, you know, the big question is, is how do we pay for this? And I know that you mentioned that we have two loans that are expiring next year on schools, and then this will be the city's only loan, if I'm not mistaken. So if you just want to explain the financial aspect of this for this public hearing, and how we're going to pay for this, and how it's going to affect taxpayers.
Sure. So, that's correct, there are two school rehab loans that are going to expire this year, and then the first payment is, and this is FY '22, so the first payment for the police station wouldn't be until fiscal '23, most likely, and those expiring are about what the new loan payment is going to be, so there should be no tax impact. It's going to be just a level debt service, so we'll move pretty much, it's like, you know, paying off one loan, and then you're just going to move into the next loan, so.
Okay. All right, and I know that we had talked, those two loans, I believe we paid 1.345 million a year, so when those expire, that will be gone, and then that, this will be rolled into that type of thing?
Yes, it's 1.3, like you said, five, that is currently, and we estimate this to be about 1.2, but, you know, Lemmister has always typically done as little years as possible, so we estimate it at 20 years. This bond could go out to 30, but depending on interest rates and everything else at the time of when we bond, we'll try to make the, you know, around the same debt service and the shortest years possible.
Okay. All right, and do you have anything to add, Mayor, before I go to members of Finance?
No, I mean, we've done other loans in the past. We've done them for 10 years, but again, you know, when we first set out on a 20-year, but that may change, right? I mean, as finances change, at end of a particular year, if we have free cash, we can make, you know, pay down on it, there are about a number of ways, but most everything we've paid off in 10 years.
Okay. All right, so at this point, I will ask members of Finance, beginning with Counselor Cormier, if you have any questions.
Just quickly, I'm looking at the documentation that was provided, and it says the retirement of debt, which is roughly about $11 million. That'll be retired this year.
Yes.
But the new bond, the new loan amount is going to, you have a request for 27 million?
Right.
Permanent borrow. So, in other words, we won't be borrowing the whole amount, we'll be paying as we get into the project, right? So it'll be half, you know, we'll pay, you know, as we get into it, we'll pay six months, but we won't have, we wouldn't have spent the whole amount, so we may do some short-term borrowing, and then, then when you go to permanent borrow, right, that'll be a debt service.
Okay, so by the time it comes around to the final, this is our loan amount, you believe we're going to be down to about the 11 or so million dollars, so it's going to be an even, it's going to be an even break. What we've already been paying is what we're going to continue to pay under the new?
The payments will be the same, but the dollar amount's not going to be the same. We're going to bond, like, $32 million.
Okay.
Yeah.
So?
It's because these are shorter, like, this $9 million was only for nine years. This $2 million was only for six years. So the payments on those, and the interest rates and everything were different. This, you know, we calculated it out for 20 years, so that's why the payment will be about the same.
Okay.
So the projected payment is already budgeted in the tax rate currently?
Right now, yes, yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, Counselor Angelini.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Reddington or the Mayor, you must follow the interest rate market and the bond market quite closely. I mean, notably, recently, the 10-year Treasury has been rising in yields, so when we go out to bond, do we anticipate similar interest rates as the debt we're retiring, or interest rates a little richer now than they were at the time we borrowed?
I'm hoping that they're going to be similar to what, because this was around 3%. It was a variable rate, and it was between 2% and 3%. I'm hoping that they're the same, but it is two years away, so it could be, you know, they change every day, so it could be a little bit different, but.
Remember, we borrowed, I mean, we borrowed 11 million for the same payment, we're going to be getting 27 permanently. So we're getting a lot more money, we've got some extra years in there, but you're getting a lot more money, and hopefully the interest rates will be competitive. But remember, on your bond rating, it's critical to your, you know, the things that we, the decisions that collectively the Mayor and City Council make, the city makes, are critical to maintain a good bond rating. That'll, just like your credit rating at your house or your business affects a lot of things. So the moves and the policy decisions that we make are clearly going to affect what interest rate we end up.
Yeah, surely. I definitely tip my hat to the financial team here at the city, they've done a wonderful job, and I anticipate Ms. Reddington will carry on that tradition. So I think as far as my questions go, you've answered them, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other members of the City Council have any questions or comments before I go to the public? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yep, just to clarify, I mean, all of these are basically projections, right? You have to assume that interest rates will be comparable or comparable to what we had borrowed at in the past two or three years from now, right? So it's, you know, hopefully things will work out, that's the best plan going forward, but again, it is, this is projection.
It is.
Thank you.
Yep.
All set.
Projections, but remember, in the past, we paid down our loans. We had 20-year loans, and over 28 years, when we had loans for Samoset, for Skyview, for the library, and all of the others, we ended up first pulling those loans for a longer term, but as we had situations where we had free cash that was higher than expected, we put that towards paying it down. So even though we've had up and downs in interest rate, we've had flexibility in the interest rates, and we've had recession, two recessions, and almost a depression, and, but the reality is, we still continue to, again, we don't have very much debt, so if we continue on with that, we continue on with the fiscal policies that we've made, then there's nothing to say we can't continue on the same way we have for 28 years, paying down our debt.
No, it's all subject also, though, to changes in the market. Counselor Angelini had mentioned, you know, what bonds are paying these days, so I understand that. I mean, I remember the library project very well, which was paid down in, you know, 10 years or something. So, just so the public understands, that, you know, borrowing $27 million and saying that we're going to replace, we're going to pay for that $27 million project with essentially money that's already in the budget, because these other bonds are being retired, is a plan and based on projections.
Yeah, and I did go on the high side, you know, just so that we're covered.
Right, so we have a little flexibility in there.
Right.
But there's no reason to say we're not. I mean, we've left a little, we've been conservative in here, and there's no reason to say we wouldn't. I don't want to, I don't want to mislead somebody to say we're putting a project together that we may in fact see increased costs later down the road, because there's nothing to tell us that at this point, or in the past 28 years, that that's likely to happen. It's very unlikely to happen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor Frida, do you have any questions?
A couple of comments.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay. Hopefully, we get through okay. This committee has worked religiously for over 29 meetings. We did a lot of soul searching, we did a lot of changes. We wanted more, obviously, but prices dictated that we come down a little bit, which we did, and we kind of followed the guide that this committee had worked on. It's pretty important to the community. We feel that it's, it's necessary, but we've had a great committee working together, and we're hoping that the community will continue to support it, and everything's been put together in such a logical way that it should be understandable for everyone. So I'm asking the Council to support that tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Frida. Counselor Bedanza?
We're going to, yeah, I would like to make a brief comment, and also, Mr. Chairman, I think we'd like to move this to the beginning of the meeting.
Sure.
When we get to our regular meeting.
Thank you, yes.
Also to accommodate Counselor Frida. I just want to say that this, there's no more better example of how we are benefited by our fiscal discipline and management over the past decades than this project, because now we're in a position to be able to do a major project, and this probably is the most significant project that we've done in a very long time, and actually be able to do it without raising people's taxes, any more than we ordinarily do with the two-and-a-half levy. So that's a, that's a real testament to the community, to the taxpayers, to you, Mr. Mayor, and to your fiscal team. I really, as a citizen, appreciate that, and this is long overdue, as Counselor Frida indicated. This is really a big step forward for Lemmister, and we should all be very proud of it.
Yep, and remember, I mean, the Council has just as much to do with it as our financial team, because you've supported us along the way as we've made decisions. You didn't have to, but you did, and that means a lot. And just one thing I wanted to clear up, Jen, I was just speaking, this is not a variable rate. I don't want people to think like we're borrowing money, and it can jump up to 9% on the interest rate. That's not the case at all.
No.
Yeah, let Jen explain that.
When you do, you, when you go out to bond, if it is variable, it's very specific. It's between, you know, like, 2% and 3%, and it would be, you know, four specific years, or if you have multiple things in the bond, like this high school room model probably had, you know, a building part of it, and then maybe some other equipment in it, so, you know, one of them, there could be, you know, several things in a bond where this is going to be just the one project. And just on the financial stability as well, just to add, you know, the bond rating stayed the same as well, and, you know, the fiscal goals that the city has had has, you know, really helped sustain that, and the balances and the stabilization and the fund balance really, you know, promote that, and it would be wonderful when we go out for this bond to get good rates, so that'll help as well.
Okay.
Great.
Good, good. Okay, at this time, I will open this hearing up to the public, and I'll ask would any member from the public like to speak in favor of C-24? If so, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Once again, would anybody from the public like to speak in favor of C-24? Chief Kennedy?
Yes, Chief Aaron Kennedy, and he's 29 Church Street. I've been here one year less than the Mayor for the city of Lemmister, and, you know, I've been optimistic, as a lot of my fellow officers will say, I've always been believed in this station will come around to us. We understand that we had to take the backseat on a couple occasions, but, you know, we toughed it out, because we always know how to move forward at the end of the day. I was able to sit down with a lot of good friends that have got to know on this department to, along with other city officials, sitting on the board, to look at this police station that we're going to build. It was funny at the time, we have never sat down on a new building committee, it was all new to us, and after three or four meetings, once we got our feet wet about how we were going to handle this and what the department needed, we took all the right steps to make sure this department will be for the future, because of potential growth and what we needed at the time. So I want, hopefully, you guys will vote for us. It'd be greatly appreciated, it's long overdue, and we have a young department, they're going to be here a lot longer than I will be, and a few other guys that have been a long time. You know, a lot of it is for them, and just please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, would anybody else like to speak in favor of C-24? Once again, would anybody else from the public like to speak in favor of C-24? And for the third time, would anybody else like to speak in favor of C-24? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi there, my name's Andrea Freeman, I live at 431 Pleasant Street. I'm here to speak in favor of C-24. We desperately need a new police station, and I want to applaud every, all the planning committees and everybody's work to bring this forward. We need this. One thing I want to add, I know you can't comment on questions, I just want to offer the idea of, you know, are there ways to incorporate more sustainable planning? Can we have solar panels on the covered, on the covered parking area? Are there other sustainable ways that we can build sustainability into this new, new fabulous building that we will have in a short time? As I understand it, all my research shows that new construction, it's no more costly for new construction to incorporate renewable designs, and so I just ask if that's possible still at this point to consider. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And since this is a hearing, we can certainly have some dialogue on that, if anybody would like to offer any?
Our engineers are here, I don't know if you want to speak to that at all. We did spend a sizable amount of time, but, well, let me, I think it's a good opportunity to talk about how did we get where we are, where we were, is we really wanted to stay close to town, similar to the library. It was very important that we kept, we could have went anywhere in the city, there were other parcels, as far as the old transfer station down there, which we thought was a big detachment from the city, and we really wanted to spend, to stay as close to the downtown as we could. The other part is, we wanted this to be an environmentally friendly, sustainable project down the road, last 50, 60 years. We wanted to make use of all grants that would help us, so that this is an energy-efficient building. And the other area is in technology. We really, you know, we've seen where technology has gone in the last 28, 30 years, and Cruiser does not look like Cruiser did 28, 30 years ago. It looks a lot different, and there's much more information, these mobile data terminals are incredible, with the amount of information and the software that they use, so if you want to speak to that, that would just be a perfect time.
You hit my specialty there, Mayor.
Yeah.
Thank you. Todd Costa from Council Blue Associates, the principal in charge of your police station project. So to speak to the aspects of sustainability and what's been incorporated into the building is actually a significant amount of that already in, just due to code itself. Highly efficient thermal envelopes, the building roof has to be solar-ready, even though we're not necessarily putting as part of the project, that way the citizens of Lemmister don't have to pay the burden of buying solar panels, but a power purchase agreement could be entered, or things of that nature, to put panels up on top of the station, so that the structure is there, ready to, and to support those type of add-ons in the future, and that could even be, before the building's done, you could start looking into things of that nature. And as far as also considerations relative to the thermal efficiencies, the heating system is a very efficient heating system. It'll actually allow them, the building itself and within the building management system, the computer software, if you would, that's going to help manage the energy of the building, will take the heat from one room and transfer it to another room. That way, you don't have to fire up the pumps on the outside of the building to do that heat exchange, or a boil, or things of that nature. So a lot of technology incorporated into just the building operations itself. The other part is, the Mayor alluded to, there are things coming, I sit on the International Association Chief of Police Council, Technology and Communications, and take part in a lot of dialogue with not only individuals from the state, individuals from the country, and then even some international folks, to see what the trends are in technology as to how they're affecting our officers, and how that comes into play in their daily activities, and how that industry is changing. One of those things you may or may not have heard of is called FirstNet, and what FirstNet is, is it's the stepping stone of smart cities. These are things of, that are basically going to be able to send a lot of information over to the officers and the cruisers to make a safer route for an emergency response, to make safer approaches when they're responding to think intersections and things of that nature. So a lot of that incorporation, even though it's still a little ways out, future-proofing and future-planning in the building, so that we have raceways and conduits and wiring, ultimately, electrical capacity as well as data capacity, has kind of been built into the building to support these future technologies that are just a little out of, you know, current day, but they are trending and they are coming.
Just one question as well, how about the use of natural lighting? I'm sure that was looked at as well, so that, you know, there's probably, you know, on a bright, sunny, summer day, there should be, you know, probably some parts of the building where you wouldn't even need lights on.
Absolutely. That is actually another aspect that is incorporated relative to code, is there are occupant sensors or, more appropriately, vacancy sensors. So you actually have to physically turn the light on to walk into the room, but as soon as there's multiple sensors within the room, nobody's in the room, or there's enough natural light coming in, the lighting, as it's closer to the wall, or closer to the window wall, is dimmed down, so that you're not expending that amount of energy. On top of all of that, all of the lighting that goes into the buildings today is LED anyways, so you're not expending a lot of energy in just the light fixtures themselves, but you're also getting that roll back as you get further into the building. We also, just for health of the officers and health of the occupants, try and put all the occupied rooms to the outside, so that you have natural light, you have that connection to your environment as well.
Good, okay. All right. Would anybody else like to speak in favor of C-24? Once again, would anybody else like to speak in favor of C-24? And for the third time, would anybody else like to speak in favor of C-24? Would anybody else like to speak in opposition to C-24? Once again, would anybody else from the public like to speak in opposition to C-24? And for the third and final time, would anybody else from the public like to speak in opposition of C-24? Seeing none, I will once again ask, does anybody else from the City Council have any final comments or questions before we close this public hearing? Counselor Angelini.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor or the architect, I know at one time there was some talk about it into a firearms train room at the police station, I guess that was finally eliminated from the end design. Could you just give me a brief overview of why that decision was made?
Well, first, the technology changes so much. We're looking at software now, the chief just incorporates with. The chief just incorporates with the stun guns. And then how quickly this technology changes to the point where if, if a stun gun was ever used, it automatically is traced immediately, goes right into the database. We know about how many voltage, what voltage was used, when it was used, what time. In the original plan we showed you last time, there's, there are a number of areas within the police station that are there for expansion. And a couple of things, if, if the federal government passes, say, the infrastructure bill, within the infrastructure bill is a ton of money for alternative energy sources. So we've decided, why would we make the taxpayers from Lemmister go and put solar panels all through this when everything's sort of iffy right now? Why not wait for that to pass and then apply for the funding to, you know, put, put solar in it and actually sell back credits? And the same thing with a lot of the money. Now, we've heard the state legislature, we've heard the federal government talking about money for training. Thus far, I don't think we've received anything from anyone for training, although the mandates are there, but they haven't backed it up with funding. We feel that a lot of that, so body cameras, those kinds of things, our police department is ready and willing, and, and we've, you know, had discussions about those. But there's, if this money passes, you know, it adds to the deficit, but why, why shouldn't we apply for the money in those areas? So we haven't ruled it out. It's just the technology changes. I know there's another county-wide initiative to set up a real sophisticated range that all the communities could use, because it's not something we use every day. So all those things are in, you know, in flux right now. The big thing is to get the police station built. And that was our big thing, is let's get them out of that building and into a new building. And these are all other things. We left a lot of flexibility within the building. And as you heard, you know, reinforcement for this, for solar panels, you know, car ports, Sally ports, all those things could be adapted later on. Even gyms, we talked about a gym, you know, having a gym inside. All those things could be done later. We have flexible space. But it's really important to stay within budget. We didn't want to, you know, go out and have to do a two and a half increase, or, you know, especially now, people are still struggling from COVID, and some people are still unemployed. And, you know, we didn't want to have to come in here and say, yeah, we're going to have to do a debt exclusion or an override. So we really wanted to stay within the budget. So the payments reflected pretty much what we're, you know, what we're paying off is pretty much reflective of what, of what our new payments are going to be.
And just-
So to start out at $37 million, we would have been down here for another, you know, another $10 million. You would, you would have been happy. We didn't want to turn this into a negative thing for, you know, taxpayers, because I think they're supportive and know we need one. But there is a tipping point.
Sure.
And are you all set, Counselor Angelini?
Yes, thank you.
And just real quick, Mayor, because we're, obviously, the dispatch is co-located currently. What is the plan with that?
I think we've agreed that, if you haven't been to 210 Lancaster Street, see what the fire department's done in there. It's done a really good job. It's amazing. And so I think what we've all agreed on is that we would move the dispatch to 210 Lancaster Street.
Okay.
So again, that would free up them, you know, the space that we kind of left just in case, if we ever moved it. And we believe we could, at 210 Lancaster Street, set up a regional dispatch center for, you know, smaller communities in the area. So that's in the works now.
Perfect.
Been a real team effort. I mean, the whole, everyone, as I said last time, everybody who was on the committee brought certain talents with them. Every single person had their own, you know, talents and, and levels of expertise that really created what we have today. And that was really helpful, I think, for our engineers and the design team and for all of us. So the citizens of Lemmister were well represented.
Good. Okay, anybody else have any final comments or questions before I close the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, if there's no objections, I will close the public hearing for C-24. Thank you guys very, very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
What's next, one usually, or on the phone? Are we doing the grants next, or, well, the interview?
Okay, so our next item up is 75-21, which is a public hearing. And Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, I guess that's you, because Counselor Nambroski's not here.
Yes, public hearing on 7521. Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the regulation of dumpster location and screenings. We continue the public hearing from our last council meeting, and there are still a couple of referrals that we are waiting for. The Board of Appeals is one of them. We also did receive a letter from the Building Inspector. Should I read that into the record during the public hearing, or?
Yeah, you can go ahead and read that into the record.
So we received a letter dated September 30th from Peter Nile, the Building Commissioner, and it reads as follows. "Member of the Legal Affairs Committee, in a previous email communication sent on September 21, 2021, I wrote that I would prefer that the zoning ordinance not include updated changes for dumpster regulations. I was asked for this opinion knees after, days, excuse me, after my knee replacement surgery while recovering at home, and I think I failed to explain the reasoning behind my recommendation. The Building Department is not responsible for matters regarding trash and/or dumpsters. We require a solid waste disposal affidavit be included in building permit applications to ensure waste is being properly, waste is being disposed of properly. Beyond that, the Health Department implements trash regulations. It is still in my opinion that this change will have little impact on the current zoning ordinance. However, if the change should be added, it should be done so under the Health Director's enforcement. If you have any questions or need further information, please feel free to contact my office." Since the earlier Peter Nile, Building Commissioner. So in light of this most recent communication from the Building Department, my, my recommendation would be to leave the public hearing open and request a, an opinion from the Health Director. Who's here?
He's here.
Right. I don't know that he's had an opportunity to read the ordinance and-
I would actually like a chance to fully read that ordinance.
Additionally-
Certainly.
It would appear to me that if, in fact, Mr. Nile's correct, and it does come within the jurisdiction of the Health Department, we're going to need a fine provision associated with this, otherwise, we're not going to be able to enforce it. So I think the Chairwoman's suggestion for a continuation of this public hearing would be appropriate. And since you're a committee of, well, I guess we'll check with your other member. Counselor Cormier?
Yeah, I agree. I totally agree. I think we need to continue the public hearing and get an official and a formal referral from the Health Department, and, and then we can-
We can go from there.
Go from there.
All right, thank you. Should I? I will give people the opportunity, if there's anybody who'd like to speak for or against. So if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of 7521, they can approach the microphone if there's anybody who'd like to speak in favor again. And for the third and final time, if anybody wants to speak in favor. Is there anybody who'd like to speak in opposition? Probably not. I'll ask again if anybody wants to speak in opposition. For a final time, nobody wants to speak in opposition. So at this point, we will leave the public hearing open and refer-
The clerk is suggesting October 25th at 6:05 PM.
Okay.
And if that's okay with you, Madam Chairwoman, we'll take a quick vote.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess we're going to have to do this by roll call, because Counselor Frieda's still operating remotely here. So I'll start with you, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
And Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Claire Frieda?
Yay.
And that shall be recorded as yay by a vote of, I guess we're seven to zero. It is a, the continuing, the public hearing has continued to October 25th at 6:05 PM. All right, thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. We now will move on to interviews, and it looks like Counselor David Cormier, that falls to you. Do you want to do these all together?
I guess we could. They're all the same, they're all the same committee, the same board. Yeah, we could have all three in, at the same time and interview them at the same time, I guess. Is Mr. Sechi here? You can come in and sit at the table. And Richard Gulick, as well as Kenneth Ridlon? If you'd like to, if you'd like to come into the chambers, you can have a seat at the table right there and-
Welcome.
Did I scare off the other two apples?
I guess so.
Do we consider this?
Okay, and you're Mr.?
Kenneth Ridlon.
Ridlon, okay. All right, welcome, and thank you very much for, you know, your willingness to serve on our commission. I know that we've been looking for some good members. And so first, I guess I would just ask that you can start out by telling us a little bit about yourself and your background and, and why you want to be on the Conservation Commission.
Born and brought up in Lemmister, Littleria, for the majority of my life, with the exception of the last 10 years I've been in Florida. And I showed up for a, where I lived in Lancaster, at which point I was chairman of the Lancaster Conservation Commission for many years. My experience is basically, I'm a biochemist, ran organic chemical plant for 25 years, also worked for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as an ocean inspector. That won me a lot of points.
I bet.
During the time that I spent in Florida, went to the University of Florida and became a certified master naturalist, volunteered with the FWC in Florida doing longlining for sharks and checking out the estuaries and did red tide sampling for Collier County, burrowing owl observations and was, I spent a lot of time volunteering in Florida. And a lot of that experience is, crosses over and is applicable. I don't think I'm going to be hunting for any pythons up here, but I hope that was one of the certifications that I actually got while I was in Florida. And I think that my background and experience would serve the city of Lemmister very well because of the experience that I've had, both in, in my college experience, real-world experience, and the experience I actually had on the Conservation Commission in Lancaster for many years. And I think that Lemmister is a very unique city, a very unique place to live. I was fortunate to be born and brought up here, and I would like to continue to, to continue to protect the assets, the natural assets, the city of Lemmister has. And if I can, if I can do that by my contribution to the Conservation Commission, I'm certainly more than willing to do that.
Good. I certainly think your experience is very impressive. I will add that I'm sure you're not going to have any dealings with pythons, and I don't think you'll have any problems here with red tide either, hopefully. Although, you know, I wish I lived a little closer to the ocean. But anyway, we really appreciate you putting yourself, you know, forward to, to be considered for this position. And I don't think there's any other members of my, of the committee here. I'm it. So I will ask other members of the city council. Madam Clerk, did you have something you wanted to add?
So you know, Mr. Sechi and Mr. Gulick are actually currently at Conservation Commission meeting right now, so that's why they didn't show up.
Oh, okay.
So you're aware.
Okay. So we'll, we'll interview them, we'll, at the next meeting, we'll, we'll invite them back to the next meeting. Okay, so at this point, I would ask, is there any members of the city council that have any questions for this, Mr. Ridlon, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
No, thank you very much. I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you very much, Mr. Ridlon, for stepping up and volunteering for the ConCom. It's very important work, as you know. And I'm very happy that you will be appointed.
It's my honor. Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Badanta?
I just want to also add that I've known Ken for a very long time, and I know his qualifications. And thank you very much for volunteering here in Lemmister. We're very lucky to have you onboard.
Counselor Angelini?
I also must confess that I've known Mr. Ridlon longer than I care to remember. I've had the pleasure of working with him on a volunteer basis on a number of projects. And his dedication is second to none. And he, we're, we're really fortunate to have him. And so I'm glad you decided to come back from Florida and welcome aboard. And you better get upstairs to that meeting.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Since I'm a committee of one at the moment, I'm going to, you know, recommend that we grant your appointment, and we'll certainly take that up. I'll recommend that we take that up early in the meeting so that you will know that you've officially been confirmed, and the Assistant City Clerk will swear you in if that, if that vote does confirm you. Thank you very, very much. Once again, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the clerk is recommending 1025, October 25th, for Mr. Sechi at 612, and 613, same date for Richard Gulick.
Okay.
That would bring us to the information session with Mayor Mazzarella.
Can we do the official introduction to the Health Director real quick?
Sure.
That's on. So-
Winding and Arrow?
Bring Jeff down. He, it is, his, I guess, orientation didn't last very long. We had him working right away.
He's a Lemmister resident, and, well, I'll let, Jeff does a very good job of, of giving you his, his bio and talking a little bit about, you know, where he's been in his career. So Jeff Stevens?
Thank you, everybody, for having me here. My name is Jeff Stevens. I live in Lemmister as a resident with my wife and my 15-year and 18-year-old son. I've been in public health for 21 years. My first 15, I cut my teeth in the city of Pittsburgh as a housing inspector. I followed that by working in the town of Westford for six years as the Health Director there. And when the opportunity came to come back home, I couldn't turn this down. So when I saw this job pop up, I, I had to apply for it, and I felt very lucky to get it. You had some very good candidates, and I'm really looking forward to getting some good work done in Lemmister at this point.
Jeff's been extremely helpful in so many areas in just a short time. And it seemed like the floodgates opened as soon as he walked through the door, but he's, he's taken on well, he's done a great job. Remember, about the same time that the former Health Director retired, Marco Binguazzi found another position at a state level, so we had no food inspector. So Jeff is in the process of interviewing for a food inspector.
We've got a couple more interviews to go. We should have that position filled, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks.
Very nice.
I told you it'd be short. He's a right, he's a get-right-to-the-point kind of guy, so.
I'm happy to take any questions, if anybody has any, any, anything that anybody's concerned about. Otherwise, I'm just going to keep plugging away.
Sounds good.
Good.
We were lucky. We, we received the health, the Board of Health, the actual Board of Health, received a substantial amount of really qualified candidates to, that applied for the job, and came down to two or three at the very end and, and chose Jeff, and we're, we're glad we did. He's done a good job, and we had some fun along the way, too, so.
Happy to be here. Thank you, everybody.
Good, welcome.
All right, the grants, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So we felt really necessary to update you because they are coming at us, well, a couple of things. The first initial allotment of KIRZAC money came to the city, followed by the recovery funding from the federal government. And so as we prepared our capital improvement plan for this year, it has many options. As I stated in the, in the past couple of minutes, when we're talking about solar and a couple of other pieces for the, for the police station, we left it so if we were able to, to use other grants, that we would make use of them rather than using, you know, regular funding sources, revenues from the city budget. So some have different funding sources, depending on what it is that we're doing, what grants we're using, or what capital improvements that we're making. So when we talk, just, just as a real initial, as an example, we talk about new police cruisers, we could use general revenue for that or free cash, but there are also new provisions in the rescue plan that we could use those federal funds. So why wouldn't we want to make use of that? So Wendy's going to take you through. We'll start with the grants and where we are with all of them. We were just notified as we were sitting here about another particular grant that- We were just notified as we were sitting here about another particular grant that we received. Is that on here?
Yep.
So this is sort of the official document that we received tonight while sitting here, but I'll let Wendy take it from here.
So first I want to, okay. First, I want to just, you have four items on the agenda tonight. I just want to go through those quickly. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. These are on the agenda for appropriation for a match. We've gotten some FEMA grants, which are highly competitive. I just want to say that working, I think in the past two years, working with the departments has been exceptional. They have identified some people within their staffs that actually do some research and really help, you know, it helps a lot to have the fire department actually adding some language to the grants because they're actually the people who do the job. So it's been a real success. The breathing apparatus, it's on the council agenda for a match tonight. We've gotten a grant for $29,000. The match is $3,000. The brush truck, which is only, we got one of 15 vehicles awarded in Massachusetts. The match is $27,000 required, but we offered to match it for more so that we could get the, you know, they're so highly competitive that they look favorably upon a higher match. So that's what we did. The North Nashua River Stabilization Project is the one just on the back of the treatment plant down by the connector. That's also, it took us about two years to get that grant. They asked so many technical questions, and it was a long review process, but we were able to get that grant. So the match for that is on the agenda tonight. And the Manous Knock Brook Project, which was the, it's the first project under our Climate Action Plan that we finished last year. So that is, that's for the second part of the design. It's a long process, and Woodard and Curran is helping us with that. So that will get us all the way through the construction plans. Before you, you have, I sent out, a couple times now, I've sent out a summary of how we use the CAREZAC funding. 70% of it went to the schools for COVID-related items. That is now closing out. So on your agenda is the acceptance of, I think, $600,000 and $10,000 for the final piece of that has to be accepted by the council.
Do you want to just go back? I mean, you can see clearly, we spent a great deal of our funding, as you can see, on education and PPEs for schools, retrofits, but Boys and Girls Club, the Remote Learning Center, when we had parents that just couldn't stay home with their children, and they didn't, couldn't find anybody, they had run out of resources for daycare, and that, we hope to do other projects with them as we get kids caught up from what, in areas where maybe they're falling behind. But again, a good chunk of that, or 70% of that CAREZAC money, went directly to the schools or to students.
Just briefly, other ongoing grants. The Johnson Street Skate Park is, we're almost ready for construction. It'll be going out to bid soon. That money's completely been appropriated. And there's been a really good committee attached to that, that, from skateboarders to, you know, for kids to adults that are interested in bikes. So it's been a really, really good process that it's a much better project having all those people involved. So that money's completely appropriated. Mass Works Grant is, most of you know, is around the mall area. It's, there's going to be a small match to the city, which we're going to pay through other grant funds. It's a huge project for, that connects, it'll ultimately connect Route 13, all the work that's being done there, all the way through Mill Street is now being done, and it'll connect the whole area that we did another Mass Works Grant for, which is, you know, all the way from downtown through way back when we did a CDAG grant for the water and Whitney Street Apartments. So all that is going to be one connected project with this grant. Safe routes to schools, this project has, the state's worked really hard on this with us. This is sidewalks and pavement intersection, you know, re-signalization of intersections and pedestrian safety, ADA upgrades. This is from Mechanic Street to Lancaster Street on Viscloïde, all in front of Drake School, which is really a big deal because that's, you know, that's the neighborhood where kids really walk to school, and we've got Allen Crest across the street, so there'll be extra precautions for that intersection so they can get across the street. It's gone from, I think, originally.
A million?
Yeah, we requested a million dollars, and the state actually expanded the project to include sidewalks on both sides of the street and the intersection improvements, and expanded the scope down Viscloïde all the way to Mechanic in Lancaster, so.
They're excited about this project because not only is it a safe route to school, but many people that work, work at the mall or in various industries in the area, walk, people bike the area. You have the pool, we have the playground that's there, we have all that housing development around there, so it just kept getting extra points. They were really excited about it, and there are a number of pedestrian areas where you push the button and the lights just flash so that there won't be, you know, you're minimizing any risk when kids and parents are crossing the street. So you'll have that other option in a number of different locations, so. And as a caveat, the lead engineer in this project went to Southeast School when it was Southeast School. So it was kind of interesting to have him leading the project, and he was a graduate of that school, so it's kind of cool.
New Mass Works Grant, we just received word that we're getting this grant. It's the extension of Orchard Hill Park Drive. It's going to be an industrial complex, about 234,000 square feet. It's going to do all the infrastructure utilities, and there's no match to the city. So we're expecting that, that the project's actually committed to 300 full and part-time jobs, so that'll be a huge win for that area.
And this is uncustomary, where you get back-to-back Mass Works Grant, just because they're so competitive. But all of our projects, the feedback from the state has been that, you know, you never fail us. Whenever you say you're going to do a project, you say you're going to create 300 jobs, you create 300 jobs, and they've been just really pleased by all of that. And so this is a huge win because we're in such bad, so badly are we in need for new space. Now, that could be life science space, it could be manufacturing space, it could be a number of things, but there'll be a $19 million, a private investment in this with 300 jobs. So this is really exciting for us.
Just briefly, other ongoing projects. The Barrett Park Dam design has been, was awarded, and there's a match to that, which we're paying out of other funds. The, you know, that's going to be, that's going to be a project that's going to be about a million dollars, and the state has said to us that, you know, get the design done, and most likely there'll be other grant funds coming for construction for that project. So that's well on its way to being designed. The Barrett Park Project is, that's a new grant that is going to do a whole bunch of things, including upgrading the playground at Barrett Park, and the city will be contributing $188,000, which will come, also come out of other grant funds that we got from the federal government. We got a mental health counselor earmark that is really going to be a position, much like the two other positions we created.
Civilian positions that we created.
Yeah, that we've created at the police station, that really help sort of people who are struggling, who can't get the resources they need. Police and fire are clearly some of the people who are out front and see these people every day. So it's going to be another helpful position for them to refer people that they see along the way to get the help that they need. They also, we got a grant for them to, for the police department to undergo 40 hours of mental health training, which they've just completed, so that's another, that's another benefit to the police department, to help dealing with this crisis.
This will go a long way in helping us to form between police, fire, health departments, other departments within the city to form an actual mental health unit when we are dealing with people, whether it be on, you know, homeless or whatever it might be, substance abuse, but also coincide with the two civilian employees that we have. And a lot of times, you know, we're not able to give people the care and the attention that we can as it gets busy, and so we want to be able to link ourselves with other mental health agencies, with the hospitals. This is going to go a long way. So we can start working with people at their front door, their doorstep, and this is huge for us.
The senior center elevator was a state earmark that we worked with our legislative delegation on. Every year, we provide priorities, and the senior center elevator has been one. So we got $150,000, which actually looks like it could cover most of the construction of that as well, after the engineer looked at the building. So that is just finished design, and we're going to meet in the next couple of weeks to talk about construction of that. The Small Bridge Program is kind of a program that is, kind of flies under the radar, but has been very helpful to us. This is our second project on Litchfield Street. Many of you remember, Litchfield Street was closed for a little while last year by Fornier to replace a culvert. That was a $500,000 grant. This is the second project on Litchfield, down by Fallport Condos. This is for the design, and we expect that we'll probably get another construction grant for that when the design is complete. Growing Places, we just got a, we got a grant for a partnership with Growing Places for a fifth in Mechanic. That was, 222 Mechanic Street was taken down, and.
Put some trees up.
Yeah.
And we thought.
We put some trees in temporarily.
Let's try.
But now Growing Places came to us. We partner with them quite a bit, and we're going to build a nice little park there with a lot of, not just to create a park, but to more of a teaching location. So we're going to have, you know, rain gardens and things like that, that'll really be able, you know, the community, the neighborhood themselves can participate.
Eyes on. So you can train people and show them what it means. You talk to somebody about a rain garden, and, you know, talking about landscaping, whatever, show them, and that's how I am. You show me, I'm good. I'll do it forever.
American Rescue Plan was passed, and it's a little bit complicated, but I'll just go through it. Everybody has any questions? I did give you all a spreadsheet on how we're planning on spending some of this money. Some of the money on that spreadsheet is free cash, some of it is Rescue Plan money. So Lemmister can spend the funds to support public health expenditures, address the negative economic impacts caused by a public health emergency, replace lost revenue, provide premium pay for essential workers, invest in water, sewer, and broadband. So we've got three years to spend, we've got three years to obligate the money and until '26 to actually pay the expenditures. So here's where it gets a little bit complicated. The total money we're receiving is the $19 million. We've gotten half. We'll get the other half next June. As part of the $19 million, there's a formula that you follow for lost revenue. So the amount that we've, we've, under the formula, our smart comp controller figured out this amount.
That's right.
It's 8.3 million out of the $19 million that is lost revenue, which means that essentially you can spend those funds as general, for general government services. So that's outside of the primary program categories that I just named in the previous slide. So this is a little bit of a summary of what's on your spreadsheet for year one. We're, this is the list of projects we're replacing under the lost revenue portion of that. Frontline police cruisers, fire engine replacement, ambulance, fire department air compressor, dump trucks at the DPW. We're covering a possible small overage with the Mass Works Grant. City Hall roof and gutter repair for the front of the building. EMA building expenses, which includes the expansion of the parking lot for, so that, because that center is really numbing down there. It's got a, you know, a lot of people use that, and there's not a lot of places to park, and recreation department expenses.
Now, hold on just for one second, because if you look at our updated capital improvement plan, you will see these items listed in capital improvement. Because, well, for obvious reasons, they were done by the departments before some of the funding was available. So we could either use our free cash, which typically we do, or any excess funds that we might have to transfer, or we can use this. And this is more applicable to use the funding from the capital improvement plan to use the American Rescue Plan funding from year one to fund these projects, which will allow us to free up other funding when we get our free cash allotment. So I think that makes sense to everybody. I mean, is that, am I explaining that correctly? And so we just moved it over from general revenue or free cash over to the American Rescue Plan.
So these are program, these are categories or projects that fall under the program funds, under the category, so it's a separate category. Second set of turnout gear, breathing apparatus for the fire department, HVAC in several of their stations, including 210 Lancaster Street, the headquarters. DPW sewer water projects is a huge part of this federal program. A lot of communities are using this money for sewer water projects. Just to explain that, we can also use some of this funding for paving those sewer water projects under the program funds, and then under the lost revenue funds, we can use that for separate paving projects. So we're going to do, we're doing Elm Street, West Street, and Lyndale Sewer Projects under this, which will be under design shortly. City Hall Heating Cooling, we're going to replace all the heating cooling units in all the offices. City Hall floor carpet replacement in various offices. The library had on their list for a fan monitoring system and motor replacement on some of their heating units. All of this is covered under the program funds. Coburn Pond Engineering Match, Barrett Park Improvements. All, anything having to do with a park is covered under this because they see it as because of COVID, people are using parks more often, and it's creating, you know, heavy usage so that, you know, they need more attention. So anything having to do with expanding parks is included in this. And then you see more of the park information, that, you know, the projects that we're looking to do. Veteran Center, they are looking for windows. Health Department, Jeff is, has done a great job assessing what we might need going forward with, for COVID, for dealing with COVID. And Sholen Farms' lost revenue is covered under the tourism part of this program. The school department has received their own $20 million. This is, you know, it's got a lot of different uses to it. They've gotten four separate pots of money that can be used to address COVID. Pretty much, they can use their funds for anything related to learning loss or having to expand their operations to deal with COVID. So we did, on your sheet, we did ask the school, the school department included a budget of building projects that they needed.
That's this document here?
And.
Do they have this, they have this document?
No.
Doesn't look like that. We'll get you a copy of this so you can see it.
So it totals, so they have already done the lion's share of their projects that they needed for general building maintenance under their projects, under their program funds from the federal government. And they, the rest of them, we're going to cover under our city money.
So it'll be 100% of what was on their capital request, it'll be 100% funded for year '21, '22?
Looking forward, so, you know, this is a three-year program that we have to spend this money, and we're certainly going to be looking for ways, we're going to reach out to the community and get suggestions from the community, because we haven't, you know, this is just the beginning of spending this funny, this money. But we're going to do probably additional sewer water upgrades. We're going to do some small business capacity building and some technical assistance. We're going to look to do a facade program in our downtown. We're going to partner with local organizations. We're going to do some marketing and tourism. Premium pay for essential workers is also included in this. Connecting to, connecting water to Sholen Farms, that project is currently a state earmark, which is, we're actively speaking with the EP about that. It's about a million-dollar project. If that does not come through, we're planning on including that in our American Rescue Plan funds. Additional education programming, some of which the mayor spoke to and will probably say a little bit more about. And expanding, we've worked with the library director to talk about things that might be beneficial, especially to kids, for expanding the library collection and some programs. And just as an aside, separate from this, is the CAREZAC funding that we received because of COVID. We're using part of that for. We're using part of that for a partnership with the Spanish Center for rent and utility assistance. Right now, it actually went up today, it's $110,000 now that we're using toward that. So that will use the rest of that CDBG funds that we used originally to give out loans to, grants to small businesses at the beginning of COVID, so they could make it through.
Okay, I'm going to stop you there, we're going to open the meeting. If you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take the role of councilors. Councilor Frida, are you still with us?
Are you?
Okay. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Present.
Councilor Angelini?
Present.
Councilor Ottinger?
Present.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Present.
Councilor David Cormier?
Present.
And I shall be recorded as present. We have seven councils, I guess, with us this evening. The chairman of records have a report.
Yes, Mr. President. I've reviewed the minutes for, I've got the dates here. I know the special meeting was October 4th and September 27th. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I find them to be in order and would ask that they be placed on file.
Very well, that may be done. I'm now entertain a motion to recess. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr, do we have a second? We have to do this by roll call. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Ottinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor Frida?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. We are in recess. Mayor, and Wendy Weeks, you can continue.
Next steps.
Last slide.
This is the end.
The last slide.
So, you know, obviously, everybody's heard that there's a couple of things pending. The federal infrastructure bill would pay for, you know, most likely would pay for things like the Coburn Pond Dam and additional roadwork that we would want to do. And we're not sure, you know, it could be, by the time that bill's done, could be just about anything in there that we could use. The state also received its own chunk of ARPA funds. We are still waiting for how that's going to be dispersed or what, it's going to be additional grant programs that that will come through and we're still waiting for that information.
But we did provide our list to the state on our projects, so they're well aware of what our projects are. So the last piece, they have this correct?
Yes.
So this here is the updated capital improvements and the reason it's so long is because, as usual, if something gets funded with federal funds and we have free cash at the end of the year and we want to fund something else, item five may pop up to item number two, because three and four were funded through federal funds or some state funds. So it's always flexible, it's always moving around. But this is from our meetings with all of the department heads. As you know, we do five-year capital improvement plans every year. So we update it every year because things change so much between grants and things that get funded through other mechanisms, or it just might be that, you know, what was important was number two for the fire department is suddenly not as important because something else came up. So things move around a lot. So last thing I'll say is Wendy's done a great job and Jen and Greg. We have department heads that don't just sort of manage their departments, they get involved. And there's a huge cost savings because most communities have had to go out and hire private consulting firms to help them to do what we just showed you tonight. We haven't spent a dime on that. It's all been done in-house with all the various talents that we've had. And, you know, every single one of our department heads, everyone, everyone on staff is capable and willing, but they learn, they work long and hard hours to make these things happen. But we could have went out and spent $150,000, $250,000,000, because there are companies all over the place marketing to communities because they have these funds coming in from various sources and can't figure out which categories they belong or can't do for you what we did tonight. So a big hats off to them. It's a really good team of people that we have and they're diligent and I don't think we've lost a grant in the last two years on anything that we've put into it and that's really a tribute to them.
Okay. I was going to open it up to any questions from the council. Councilor Cormier?
Thank you very much. I have, well, I have many, but I'll just ask two, because they affect my ward and I know we have other stuff on the agenda tonight. But maybe I'm being too premature, but the Litchfield Street project, are we going to be looking at saving money and time by having another closure of the street? Or do you think we're going to keep it open?
I don't know, because the design isn't done yet. So once the design, every project's so different that the, that they haven't, we haven't gotten to that.
Remember on the first project, they had it go through deep?
Right, right.
They were worried that, you know, the sides just cave in.
Right.
This might not be the situation where it's as deep. This will also help the flooding in your ward where in the 556 Central Street, those, you know, manufactured homes, you know, the water would start to build up.
Right.
So, you know, this is a big project, but it's small enough to fall under this category. But later on, we'll be able to tell you when we should get closer on the design.
Okay. And one other thing, the municipal vulnerability whole thing. How much more money besides, so I know that this is the first one on here, right, for Manousnak? Right? How much, how many other projects are we going to be able to get done? And is there anything else on the radar? And the reason why I ask is because I know that there's issues with a culvert at Lake Samoset and I didn't know if it's on the radar or if it qualifies.
So it's on the list.
Okay.
And I would have said, if you'd asked me last year, I would have said it's a ways off. Any other project besides Manousnak was a way, was a ways off. But because of all the federal money, I think that we'll be most likely able to pay for the Manousnak construction without using the MVP program. So I think that that's good news for us.
And so maybe we can use the MVP for something else.
Something else.
See, that's what I'm saying, we keep this all moving here. Something might be pulled off to get funded by MVP. But, you know, we have a situation here at Fallbrook School with a culvert there. I mean, there are these problems, we've got some, you know, issues up, you know, in North Lemister with, actually, we've resolved quite a few out there and it's the last couple that we have, you know, are substantially, you know, they're expensive and involve a lot of engineering. So things will move around for sure.
Good. Okay. I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other councillor? Councilor Angelini?
Thank you, Mr. President. As a Ward 5 councillor, I'm extremely grateful for, I see West Street, Reining and Lyndale, but as a resident of the community, Wendy, I just want to extend a genuine thank you so much. And I wish there was a way I could file a petition to prevent you from ever retiring.
Well, the former comptroller said I had to stay till I was 82, so I-
To get our full pension.
Yeah.
Perfect. But you're right. I mean, it doesn't end and we're, we don't have huge staffs. So everything we work on is us, it's our team. We use some consultants when we need them, but it's really us. And Wendy does all of this grant work and other communities, you know, wonder why we're successful at getting the grants that we, that we do. But on the other side, we make the state and federal government proud as well, because they're helping to assist us here and how embarrassing it would be if we didn't follow through with it exactly. And look at downtown, the grants that we got, the money that collectively the council and the mayor used taxpayers' dollars, and we're at a, you know, 5% vacancy rate for both office and commercial space downtown. That shows you that the money invested by the state and federal government, your tax dollars, worked.
Well, a lot of good news, but not new news for us, continues and as councillor Angelini indicated, Ms. Weeks, thank you for all your efforts. You're a big part of that, our success and we really truly appreciate it. It's something that's been happening for a long time and Lemister has clearly benefited by it.
Well, thank you. I just, I want to reiterate that it, over the past five years, I'd say that we've really, really, the departments designating someone on their staff, it makes a big difference to have a police officer or firefighter help with the narrative because they know the language. And the people who review these applications are former police and firefighters and they, they'll know when something didn't come from, you know, directly from a department. So it's really been a, it's been a win for the city to have the team.
We went from people seeing the word grant and saying, Wendy, here we go, to Wendy, we've got an opportunity for a grant, let's work together on this. And that's really what's made the biggest difference. Even people that have no skin in the game, in particular near the department, have said, hey, this is good for the city, we'd like being part of the team, want to help Wendy out, so we don't have to use, you know, public money to hire, you know, private companies to do this. Even our, even our TIPS and all of that, our tax and commit financing, we do it all in-house. Most other communities hire other people to do it. So it really comes from that spirit of not just dropping it on somebody else's desk or throwing it over the wall because it's not their department. It's about working together and creating these teams and, as Wendy said, in the last five years, it's been an absolute blessing.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Unless anybody has anything else? Councilor Ottinger?
Just a couple of quick questions and, well, a question and a request. Number one is, Manousnak Brook, what's the status of that project right now?
Behind, over, yeah. So that's, so that's our second grant that we've gotten that's going to take us through the bid process. It'll actually complete the construction bid documents for that. And so then we'd be ready to go out to construction, so.
Okay.
That's, that expires, so I would say probably next June that'll be complete.
That'll be, okay.
These are very long, meant to get the public involved, to create some forward thinking. These aren't, I know sometimes people think a project, you know, should get started and funded and everything happens in just a couple of weeks or months. But in reality, there's a whole, a project like this, it's very intensive and collaborating and looking at various options to, I mean, at one point, you know, an option was tearing out the parking lot behind there and daylighting the river, which would be nice if we had, you know, if we had plenty of parking. But at this particular point, day and night, parking downtown is pretty full, so that parking is valuable. We'd love to see the Manousnak Brook opened up and the same way it is everywhere else, but it's surely not an option for us.
Okay. And then the second is a request. This slide deck has been very informative and I would like to, you know, know if we can get a copy of it, because I think for future reference, it's going to be a good tool.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ottinger. Thank you, Mayor, Ms. Weeks. Okay, next up is the License Commission.
Do you want me to take that? Is that going there? Yeah, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta move into the 21st century.
The clerk is handing out your statistics over the last year. This is a review under the charter. We're supposed to review each department under section 5.6 of the charter every couple of years. And I think the clerk provided you a little schematic that I prepared, basically giving us an update and the public an update of what the License Commission's activities have been over the last year or so. So if you want to present that to us, we're all ears.
Okay, perfect. And based on your chart, just, you know, again, the mission, the mission, the mission of the Lemister License Commission, you know, is, our mission statement is to ensure, is to ensure compliance with city ordinances and applicable state laws by providing responsible and orderly licensing and changing of the original license agreement. And it pertains to the following businesses that sell liquor and/or food, allow dancing, supply automatic amusement devices, purchase and sell, purchase and/or sell automobiles, new and or used, and provide taxi or limousine service within the city of Lemister. And so, well, the first, the first bullet up is an overview of the activities of the board for the past 12 months. And over the last 12 months, we had, again, we reviewed and approved the change of managers for 11 licensed establishments that sell liquor and/or food. We transferred three licenses for licensed establishments that sell liquor and/or food. We issued a new all malt, one all wine and malt off-premise license for downtown Lemister, in Lemister. We issued, we reviewed and approved one new all alcohol off-premise license, or on-premise license. We did, we reviewed and approved temporary outdoor seating for 13 licensed establishments and restaurants in the city of Lemister. We reviewed and approved the extension of hours for 23 licensed establishments in the city of Lemister. We issued 10-day, one-day special licenses for the city of Lemister for different groups that came in to, they wanted to run different activities. And we reviewed in 18 violations of the licensed establishments and one-day suspensions were issued and held in abeyance for one year for, this was a, a compliance check that was done by the Massachusetts, it's the Massachusetts Activity Council or TIPS in the city of Lemister Police Department. There was one license revocation that was done, one licensed establishment that didn't have a manager on-premise for over a year. So we pulled that license and brought it back into the city of Lemister. Issued one new pool table license. We issued one new livery license for a new livery business that's going to open up here in the city of Lemister. And we issued three new Class II used, Class II licenses for used automobiles in the city of Lemister. So that's just the, an overview of some of the activity, of the activities for the last 12 months. I mean, if you want to know any, any additional, got any additional questions on those, we're glad to answer them.
You've been pretty busy.
Well, thank you. By the way, I don't know if anybody knows, this is Commissioner Halat.
You know her?
Who was on the board with us. Thank you.
I'm sorry. She was the first.
Thank you for introducing her for the public and yourself, Mr. Kelly. Does any councillor have any question? Councilor David Cormier?
Yeah, no, I, first of all, I just want to thank everybody for all that you do. I know that this is not always an easy commission. You know, it involves enforcement and sometimes ruffling feathers and making people not so happy. But, you know, you do it well. You do it very well and we appreciate that. And I guess I would just ask, you know, is there any, any challenges you face, any, anything that you can think of that we can do to help or make your job easier? Any resources you need, maybe that you don't have that come to mind?
I haven't, to be honest, not at this time. I mean, I, again, I'm going to revert back. Over the last five years, for me, you know, I heard it when Dean was talking about teamwork and things like that, we've been getting a lot of good cooperation from the other departments within the city, with, that work in the city. Communications has improved tremendously for us, where we're getting feedback from fire, police, building, health department, you know, and it's been, it's been refreshing. You know, even, we're trying to get more with the zoning and the, you know, try to get more, understand the zoning and the new zoning laws that are coming out and, you know, the future planning, we're trying to, you know, get, get ideas and get information and feedback from them, especially for new people that are coming into the city and applying or, I think, you know, of that nature.
Yeah, and I'm glad to hear that. Of course, that teamwork is very important. I know that, you know, a few years back, when we, when the pool tables were our jurisdiction, we had sort of a problem there. You know, there was an incident in town and we didn't get that feedback from the police department. So I'm glad that everybody's working together and making sure that everybody's, you know, on the same page so that we can have the proper, you know, enforcement in a timely, you know, in a timely manner. If there's any problems, we can know about it right away and do what we have to do to mitigate it. So it's good to hear. Thank you very much, once again, for all you do.
Thank you.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yep, thank you very much. Thanks, both of you, for coming down. Now, do you have a third member? It's through present commission?
Ken, Ken Tate, is on us, is on the board with us. Ken, Ken Tate is on us, is on the board with us. Ken has opted for personal reasons not to, I'm going to say, renew his, his commitment or has taken another six-year term appointment. So right now, Ken is serving temporarily until the mayor can find a new appointment.
Okay.
That's someone that's going to fit the team that we have going.
Yep, and thank you for that. What's the status? Are there any licenses that are currently available?
There, there are no, there, I believe we have package store beer and malt and wine. And that's off-premise. And I believe there's, there's no, there's no, all the other pouring licenses are out right now. But as we get down to, you know, let's say the pending matters, I can give you a little update, there's this overflow rooming taxi, there are two or three non-operating pouring licenses in the city of Lemmister. I don't know the exact number, but that, but because they did not reopen with COVID. So those will not be automatically renewed because at the end of the year, they're considered pocket licenses.
Okay.
So those will come back to the city if they don't, if they don't operate, you know, go into full operation before November.
Okay. So you said pour, non-operational pouring licenses, non?
On-premise, where you can actually go in, food, you know, beer and wine, alcohol service with restaurants.
Okay, good. So that makes sense. Okay, all right. So if people are interested, people in the public are interested, did they contact the License Commission directly? Or what's the, where would they get the information? Somebody in the public?
What we do is we, two to three times a year, we actually put a public notice out in the paper where, where, you know, we have X amount available and we'll be accepting applications for, for, you know, for wine and malt, full liquor, or, you know, package store licenses.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Angelini?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Kelly, I know at one time, there were seasonal licenses where for eight months of the year, you, you had full pouring alcohol, beer, wine, and then for a portion of the year, we were limited to beer and wine. Have those, have those been done away with?
I believe they have. Right now, it's either beer or wine, or, or it's all alcohol.
I see.
And some of them still, I mean, you got, you got two golf courses in the city of Lemmister that, one of them maintains their limited hours during the off-season, and then there's one that does close for the, for the season.
Sure. One last follow-up if I may.
Sure, of course.
Just, I have, I have a sneaking suspicion that you've been on the License Commission about as long as Mr. Chaconi's been on the planning boards. So could you share with me how many years you've been a, a License Commission member?
I, I forget, I, I don't, I'm going to put it as, my daughter was a sophomore in high school when I got recruited, when I was recruited, but I think it's going on 24.
Wow, congratulations. Thank you for your service. Thank you both. Good to see you again. Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
I have a quick one, just for my own clarification. On the list, there's a new wine and malt off-premises license for all towns. So that's, that's somebody goes into a store and they buy beer or wine, whatever, and they take it with them. And then underneath it's for Logan's Table, it says off-premises license, but is that just a typo?
That's a typo.
It's a typo. I was confused, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Any other councilors? Thank you very much for coming in. Appreciate it.
There's a couple of other things you asked about. Description of significant matters pending before the board, okay? There are a couple. One of the, we have a couple, what we, what we noticed as overflow lots. One of them is at 34 Mohawk Drive, and that deals with Class II licenses, okay? And my biggest concern is, is that we regulate Class II licenses. And what they do is they use cars. And what, what we, what we did find is that there was one licensed staff, one licensed Class II dealer in the city of Lemmister that was using it as a dump site. He was, you know, because he's only could have X amount of cars on his lot, and he had X, and he was overflowing it there and that, you know, without the approval of the License Commission. So we did, we were able to put a stop to that. However, there's still overflow lot there. We don't know who the, who the, who, you know, who's responsible for those automobiles. It's, so we've been working with the building department and trying to get the information. However, they're working with planning now and with zoning because there isn't a, there is no way to enforce that right now with the city of Lemmister. So that's one of the things that's being, being worked on. And I think it's, you know, something that knowledge that the council should have because what I don't want to see as a License Commissioner is that when we regulate Class II dealers and they, we, they have an approved lot for 30 cars or 20 cars or 10 cars, that they find this piece of property that someone's going to rent to them and say, okay, you can put 100 down here, just don't, no one knows. And the businesses down there aren't even registered, whoever's operating there are not even registered with the city, you know, with the city of Lemmister.
So, so why wouldn't that be a zoning violation?
I don't know. I think it's, because it's not, it's not, it's not, I'm not, Mark, I'm not that familiar with the zoning laws.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm relying on information I get from the other departments. And then there's another one, there's on Mohawk Drive, there's another company down there. It's a towing company, but when you look at it, it looks like a chop shop, in my opinion. When you drive, do a drive-by, it looks more of a chop shop where, you know, automobiles are coming in and pots are going out. That's illegal. That's considered a Class III, which is a junkyard. And there are no more Class III's available in the state of Massachusetts. Everything in the state of Massachusetts for Class III right now is grandfathered. After that, you know, there are no more to issue.
So, so what, so if that's going on, what you need is legal resources in order to enjoin it.
Yeah, and we've been doing that, we've been using, we've, we've actually, we've communicated with Culpman and Page.
Right.
And we've gotten the information to the, to building and, and to planning and to zoning. And I believe that redoing some of the, redoing the zone, redoing the zoning right now, and I believe that's some of the language it has to change so that it's, that it becomes, so that we can enforce that.
Well, keep us abreast. If there's something we need to do as far as legislation, I'm sure the council would be more than happy to entertain it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's important because what, what we, I mean, we have, I mean, we have one, I think we resolved it right now because we, we had one, one business downtown that was, you know, not knowing that so, planning or zoning gave them appropriation for 10, 10 automobiles. We thought the lot, and, you know, the communications wasn't there. Shame on us, we didn't do, I mean, but we increased it to 25, and then they were supposed to go before planning and zoning and get the variance done. They never did the paperwork. So what we did is we told them he has 60 days to remove his cars, get it back down to 10, legal limit.
Do your licenses have a provision in them that, that says they have to, they have to comply with the zoning?
The licenses, yes, they do. They have to get approval from the building inspector for that lot.
So in other words, if they don't, if they're not in compliance with zoning, they're in violation of their license terms.
So it's either revocation or fine. That's, that's, that's what we have. That's what we have right now.
So that's a tool?
Yes.
All right. Anything else you want to bring to our attention?
The other thing, future goals and objectives of the board.
Right.
Okay. Right now, taxi and, we have one taxi company, taxi business in the city of Lemmister left. We're reviewing the taxi rules and regulations. We want to bring those up to, say, 2021, 2022 and get the regulations in. And we're trying to mirror, the city of Pittsburgh had a great plan, so we're going to try to mirror that where, you know, that type of rules and regulations. And that's in process right now. Culpman and Page reviewed our first draft. They gave us our comment. We're ready to move forward and review what the License Commission.
So is this, there's some way, will it, will it integrate with Rideshare and, and how does that all work in the process?
Rideshare, we don't.
Have anything to do with, right?
No, Uber, we don't have anything to do with. It's just licensed taxi licenses, you know, livery, you know, limousine service and taxi.
Okay.
And then the third thing right now is, the third thing that, pending that we want to see for the future is that we got, we need to review our, the rules and regulations that we have for rooming houses in the city of Lemmister that we license. Okay, and try to get some definition from which ones are city license and then which ones the state comes in and just grants wide open. And then how do we control those and what's the best way to control those? So, so that they don't become, you know, dormitories or, you know, fire traps or, you know, nuisances for the city of Lemmister.
Right.
So that's, that's the, and that's the second thing, the pending right now for future planning. And that's about all we have, Mark.
All right. Thank you very much. That was informative.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Okay, next on our agenda would be 9-22.
If I may, Mr. President, this involves my employer. I just want to make it clear that I am abstaining from the hearing and will be abstaining from the vote later.
Very well, so noted. And I think Councilor Pauline Cormier, this is you tonight, right?
It is. 9-22 Verizon New England Incorporated requests permission to lay and maintain underground conduits and handholds with the wires and cables to be placed therein under the surface of the following public way or ways. Mount Pleasant Avenue, place two four-inch conduits on Mount Pleasant Avenue beginning at manhole 72A, located on the northerly side of Mechanic Street and running, running in a southerly direction down Mount Pleasant Avenue, a distance of approximately 241 feet to a point and then westerly to the westerly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue. From Mount Pleasant Avenue, place one four-inch conduit on Mount Pleasant Avenue beginning at pole T dot three, located on the easterly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue and running in a northwesterly direction along Mount Pleasant Avenue, a distance of approximately 120 feet to a point on the westerly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue. Howe Street, place one four-inch conduit on Howe Street beginning at pole T dash two, located on the northerly side of Howe Street and running in a westerly direction down Howe Street, a distance of approximately 209 feet to the westerly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue. The reason for this is to place conduit to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications. Mr. President, I will ask if there's anyone here from Verizon to address this. If you, step up, sir. Mr. President, I know that there, we do have some questions about this. We do have a gentleman from Verizon. I think we can hear him out at this point. Good evening. Could you please state your name for the council?
Yes, my name is Paul Davis, and I am representing Verizon on their behalf tonight in regards to the petition and what was just mentioned about the petition. The objective of the placement of the conduit in the handhole is to reroute the current service there on Mount Pleasant and Howe Street. The resident or the, actually the property owner at 37 Mechanic Street requested if Verizon and the utilities that are on poles two and one that are in front of their business, if they could move or remove those poles. Those poles currently have a lot of utilities rising up on that pole and being distributed throughout that area. So the conduit and the placement of the handhole would reroute those services from those poles and be able to remove those two poles that the property owner at 37 Mechanic Street requested if they could be removed or not. So it's basically to reroute the services throughout that area, remove the poles, get everything out of that area of 37 Mechanic Street, clean up that area as well, and reroute the service. And that's about it.
Have you, has this been, have you spoken or do you know if anybody's spoken with the Department of Public Works regarding, there's, there's other work that's been going on in the area, and we just had this issue with National Grid.
Okay.
The, the, the roads were dug up, resurfaced, and then National Grid had to come back in. National Grid reached an agreement with the city that it was, agreed it was their responsibility, they would take care of redoing the road over again. So you see where our concern is. Now we have a Verizon coming in and it is in the, putting us back, and the people in this neighborhood right back in the same position.
Right. I have not been informed if anyone has contacted the DPW. However, that can be done and has been done in the past. So Verizon is more than willing to work with the DPW and see what their issues are or recommendations are. So to answer your question, no, I have not been informed if anybody's contacted the DPW.
If I may, so, Mr. President, that leaves us at an issue to leave this public hearing open?
Yeah, I, I think given the concerns that our DPW has, it would be a great idea to have that discussion between the utility and our DPW before we act on this.
Okay.
And it would be flexible if we left the public hearing open. And the chairwoman is actually on the line as well, so I'm going to ask if she's okay with that. Councilor Frida?
I would agree with that.
Okay. All right. So the recommendation of the committee is to continue the public hearing in order for you to get in touch with our DPW and coordinate the work. With the next meeting, give you enough time. Our next meeting is October 25th.
Oh, yeah, that'd be plenty of time.
Okay. Do you have a suggested time?
Six.
Six o'clock? Okay. So the clerk is indicating that the suggestion is to continue the public hearing to October 25th at 6:00 PM. And if that's okay with the committee, we'll do a quick roll call vote on that. Councilor Angelini?
Mr. President, could we ask the DPW director or one of their agents to submit a letter to the council prior to that next hearing that they have indeed engaged in this conversation and are comfortable with it?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna certainly need an affirmation from DPW that there has been a conference and a meeting of the minds.
Thank you.
All right. So we're now voting on the continued public hearing, October 25th at 6:00 PM. I'll start with Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Oringer?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
And Councilor Frida?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of six to zero. One abstention, the public hearing has been continued. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm now going to conduct the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying a specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on a matter that's on our agenda this evening? In a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on an agenda item this evening? In a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on an agenda item this evening? Seeing none, I will declare the public forum closed. It will now go to communications from the mayor.
Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests the appointment of Cheryl Carlino of 15 Tolman Avenue to the Office of Emergency Management.
The communication to confirm the appointment of Cheryl Carlino is referred to Ways and Means. Councilor Cormier, do you want to?
Yeah, I would give this regular course, and we are going to set up an interview with Ms. Carlino on October 25th, 2021 at 6:10 PM.
Very well. The communication has been given regular course with an interview on October 25th at 6:10, is it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, very well. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, we have none. And then we are matters before the city council, starting with the financial report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We began the fiscal year on July first, 2021, with nineteen million, nine hundred and four thousand, six hundred and two dollars and eighty cents. We've, to date, earned interest of six thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-seven cents, giving us a balance of nineteen million, nine hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. Pending all of the communications that we've had so far this fiscal year, plus the ones that are on tonight, if they are all approved, we will have spent eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, sixty-four dollars and twelve cents, leaving us with a balance of nineteen million, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. And that is the financial report.
Okay, do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move on to finance, and, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask you to do C twenty-four first, if you would.
Absolutely. We did say we'd move that up to the top of the calendar, so we will address that first. C dash twenty-four, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests that twenty-seven million dollars is appropriated in addition to the three million dollars previously appropriated by the council on August fifteenth, 2019, and the two million dollars previously appropriated by the council on August tenth, 2020, for the purpose of constructing and equipping a police station, including the payments of costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow such amount and issue bonds or notes therefore, under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, or any other enabling legislation, and that the mayor and/or the treasurer are each authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project and this vote. Any premium received under the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. We did have a public hearing this evening, and obviously, this, this is a project that is long overdue. We did hear from the comptroller tonight regarding this loan order and how we would address this as a city to pay this obligation if authorized. And I certainly am very much in favor of this, and I really could not thank everybody enough who have worked on this over the years. It's been a long time coming, and there's been a lot of work and a lot of thought put into this, and hopefully, by the time that this is all done, if we do approve this and this does become a reality, we will have one of the finest and most user-friendly police stations in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So it would be my recommendation, Mr. President, and I'll ask that you poll members of my committee.
Very well.
That we grant C dash twenty-four.
Very well, Counsel Pauline Cormier.
I feel privileged to be able to make this vote. I would, I would agree.
Very well, Counsel Angelini.
I would make it unanimous.
Very well. You've heard unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash twenty-four. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, if I could?
Of course.
Counsel Frida, I'd just like to ask the council to support this. I've served on this committee over twenty-six years. Been a long time coming. It was done the right way. There was a lot of input. Over twenty-nine meetings we had, looking at design, looking at the whole program, and coming out with, with a building and a site that we're all gonna be proud of. So I'm hoping that we have support for that.
Thank you, Counselor, for your comments, as well as your long tenure on the committee and all your hard work. Is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, this will be by roll call, and I'm gonna start with you, Counsel Frida.
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Angelini.
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, unanimous vote of seven to zero. The authority, bond authorization, has been granted. A historic moment in the city of Leominster, to say it the least.
And I do have an order?
Yes.
Okay. And ordered that twenty-seven million dollars is appropriated in addition to the three million dollars previously appropriated by vote of the council on August fifteenth, 2019, and that two million dollars previously appropriated by vote of the city council on August tenth, 2020, for the purpose of constructing and equipping a police station, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow such amount and issue bonds or notes therefore, under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, or any other enabling legislation, and that the mayor and/or treasurer are each authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project and this vote. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the costs or issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call as well. Counsel Frida?
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. The order has been adopted. Thank you very much, all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to C eighteen, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, C dash eighteen, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests an appropriation of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars be made to the police department expense account, equip, excuse me, the police department equipment expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is just a ratification of a vote that we took at the last meeting. This is for required in-service training of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars, plus equipment of fifty thousand, for a total of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. It would be my recommendation, Mr. President, that we grant or we ratify C dash eighteen, and I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Very well. Counsel Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Counsel Angelini?
I agree as well. The chief made a, made a very logical argument for the money.
The unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee is to ratify C eighteen. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Counsel Frida?
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of seven to zero. C eighteen has been ratified. I don't think we need an order, because we already got one, right?
We already did.
All right, moving on to C twenty, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, C dash twenty, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of a new brush truck for the Leominster Fire Department, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is for a match of ten percent on a FEMA grant. So I did have a discussion today as well with the fire chief. We do have a couple of brush trucks now. One of them is a nineteen eighty-five, and the other is a two thousand and three, and they're just both retrofitted pickup trucks that they've been using for, for brush fires. And obviously, you know, with the kind of grant money that's available, you know, we can, we can certainly, for, you know, very minimal local cost, get a vehicle, and I've been told by the chief that they, as Wendy, the grants writer, mentioned earlier, what they're looking to do is to go out above and beyond what, you know, what they normally can get for, for money from the government, and we're gonna spend more locally. The chief indicated to me that the truck they're gonna purchase can be used for flood situations or in the event of lost hikers. It can go, you know, in, in heavy terrain and in the woods, and also fight building fires as well. It's gonna have a pumper on it. So basically, what we're gonna end up is with is like you described to me, if you watch TV on the nightly news and you see brush fire trucks out in California, that's what we are gonna end up with here. So it would be my recommendation that we spend such little money locally to get, you know, this grant, which is a good, a good bargain for the city, and it would be my recommendation that we grant C dash twenty, and I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Very well, Counsel Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Counsel Angelini?
May I just add that with all the acquisition of conservation land in the Water Supply Protection District and the increased recreational, passive recreational uses out there, interaction with human beings and nature sometimes result in fires, so I think this would be a wonderful investment in, in a longer-term stewardship program, and perhaps, as was echoed by members of the Recreation Department, when they were before the council, the city fire department may indeed get involved in upgrading some of those fire roads out there, and this may be an additional incentive to do so. So I will be supporting this as well, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Angelini. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash twenty. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Counsel Frida?
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. Does the chairman have a motion, an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of one hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of a new brush fire truck for the Leominster Fire Department, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Is this, oh, I gotta sign this. Move for the adoption of the order?
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Counsel Frida?
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. Moving on to C dash twenty-one, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, C dash twenty-one, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests to appropriate two thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and nine cents for purchase of facepieces related to SCBA, which stands for self-contained breathing apparatus for every firefighter, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is another ten percent match on a FEMA grant. So it would be my recommendation, I think this is pretty self-explanatory, that we can get our hands on some equipment and only have to pay for ten percent of the cost locally and let FEMA pay for the rest. I think it's, my opinion, an all-brainer, and I would recommend that we grant C dash twenty-one, and I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Okay, Counsel Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Counsel Angelini?
I'm in agreement as well.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Counsel Frida?
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. C twenty-one has been granted by a vote of seven to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of two thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and nine cents for the purchase of facepieces related to SCBA, which is self-contained breathing apparatus for every firefighter, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Once again, this is a ten percent match on a FEMA grant. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Counsel Frida?
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. The order has been adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to C dash twenty-two, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, C dash twenty-two, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests to appropriate two hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars for the bank stabilization project located adjacent to the treatment plant near the Leominster Connector, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding a twenty-five percent match to a previously received MEMA hazard mitigation grant. So you heard the explanation tonight from Ms. Weeks, the grants writer, that this is some much-needed work that needs to be done to shore up that area, and once again, for a small piece of local money, we can get a bigger piece of, of grant money, so it would be my recommendation that we grant C dash twenty-two. And once again, I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Thank you. Counsel Pauline Cormier?
It's a very important project. I would be in agreement.
Very well, Counsel Angelini?
I'll make it unanimous, Mr. President.
Thank you. You heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash twenty-two. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Counsel Frida?
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of seven to zero. C dash twenty-two has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars for the bank stabilization project located adjacent to the treatment plant near the Leominster Connector, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding twenty-five percent match to a previously received MEMA hazard mitigation grant. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Counsel Frida?
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. The order has been adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to C dash twenty-three, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, C dash twenty-three, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests to appropriate fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to continue the Manusnock Brook Wall Replacement Project, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding a thirty-three percent match for the MVP, which stands for Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant. Once again, some much-needed work in the downtown area, right near Manning Avenue, and for very short local money, we can, we can get a much bigger piece of grant money, so it would be my recommendation that we grant C dash twenty-three, and I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Counsel Angelini?
I'm in agreement as well, Mr. President.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Finance to grant C dash twenty-three. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Counsel Frida?
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. Does the, the C dash twenty-three has been granted by a vote of seven to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to continue the Manusnock Brook Wall Replacement Project, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding required thirty-three percent match for MVP, which is a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Counsel Frida?
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. C-23, the order has been adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to Legal Affairs in 75-21, Council Schalfo Zephyr, do you have a report?
I do, I do. 75-21, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the regulation of dumpster location and screening. We had a public hearing earlier this evening, and I did read a letter from the building inspector, Mr. Niall, into the record indicating that this particular ordinance change would not be, or not come under the purview of the Building Department, but would really come under the purview for enforcement of the Health Department. So we kept the public hearing open, which is scheduled for 10:25 at 6:05 PM. So my recommendation for 75-21 this evening would be for further time.
Very well. And we have voted on the hearing date and time, so we're just gonna vote on further time now. And we're gonna do that by roll call. Council Frida.
Yay.
Council Schalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Angelini.
Yay.
Council Ortinger.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council David Cormier.
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. 75-21 has been given further time. Moving on to 11-22, is the chairwoman ready to report?
11-22, request that the city council vote to accept the 2020 re-presincting plan for the city of Leominster. Was given regular course on 10/4/21.
This is a petition filed by our city clerk in conjunction with the state and our census data. Maybe the city clerk wants to just give us a little brief overview.
Right, that would be helpful.
So as you know, every 10 years, we have a federal census. And after we have our federal census, we have to redo the precincting lines for awards and committees, as along with the state for their lines for representatives. And we've received our data file cabinet, is what we call it, and we've gotten our numbers in. So we've grown as a city overall. Our new number is 43,782 people. And because of that, we had to rearrange our precinct lines. Because the state regulates how many people can be in a precinct, and it cannot be more than 4,000 people per precinct, and they have to be relatively even. And you cannot purposefully separate minority populations. So what happened is, this year, the state actually offered a lot of help for the re-presincting, and they did a lot of the hard man work. But we also had a working group in the city hall, which consisted of our GIS consultant, Kristen Kelly, John Roseberry, our engineer, the assessor, Bill Connor, myself, the planning director, and the mayor's office. And we looked at the data that was presented, and we compared it to our previous 2010 map and what they proposed now. We've already double-checked the map, so none of our polling locations will be moved outside of a different ward. None of our candidates on the ballot would be negatively impacted. Everybody stays in their same ward in committee, on committee, pardon me, precinct. So that won't change. There will be some parts of Leominster that do change. It's about 600 people that will be affected, mostly in Ward 1. Because how Leominster grew, Ward 3, and Ward 2 grew a lot compared to the rest of the city. So in order to balance that burden, we had to pull people up. And essentially, Ward 1 got more people. Ward 2 spread out some of their people. Ward 3 spread some of theirs to 4 and 5 to balance it out. So the map that's proposed shows the new proposed lines. There will be a mailing that goes out after this is looked at by the state, and they approve it as well, because they have to do so by October 30th. And everybody who would be affected will get notification. And within the packet that I had originally provided on October 4th, you'll see the proposed new boundary lines, the proposed for the wards and the precincts. We call them a map and block parcels. And so essentially, it's everybody, everywhere, and all its data that we have to use in an algorithm to place them appropriately. And then there's also a small map that's to scale to give you a visual of it in total.
Thank you very much, that's helpful. So will the people who have been redistricted, you know, the voters that are going to 4, 5, or wherever they're going in Ward 1, will that impact, will they have to change their polling place for the November 2nd election?
No.
For the upcoming election? When is it effective?
January 1st, 2022.
Okay, all right, well, that's helpful.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a pretty cogent explanation, I think.
Yeah, no, that makes perfect sense to me. I mean, I can do some committee work right here. Mr. Angelini.
I think you're, Mr., this is Legal Affairs, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, right.
Yeah, Council Cormier, David Cormier.
Yep, no, I'm certainly in favor of this. And I did mention, when this was first introduced to us to get on the agenda at the special meeting of October 4th, I pointed out that Chapter 1, Section 1-11 will actually have to officially be petitioned to be changed as well. Once we get their recommend, once they, once the state, well, once, is it the state?
Yes.
The state, once they approve this, we're gonna have to update our ordinance. So we're gonna need a petition to do so, because these boundaries are laid out by ordinance. So obviously, in order to get this, you know, on the books by January 1st, hopefully, we'll have an answer so that it can be petitioned at the, you know, in time for the next meeting. But if not, maybe the first meeting in November, so that we can get this through the process and get it on the books by January 1st. But in any event, it's gonna, it's gonna become effective January 1st, whether we are quite done voting on our ordinance or not, correct?
Correct.
Right, so it should be on the books by the 1st of January, but I don't know if it will be.
Well, to speak to that, actually. So if we are to vote on this favorably tonight, the state plans to come in person tomorrow to pick up the vote and our map and block parcels and our boundary descriptions, and it will go on Friday on their committee meeting to vote on. So I'll know Friday.
Oh, good, so we can have, we can have one, Chapter 1, Section 1-11 petitioned for the first time.
Next agenda.
October 25th, perfect.
All right.
Good.
So do we have a unanimous recommendation from Legal Affairs?
Yes, yeah.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to grant 11-22. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Council Frida.
Yay.
Council Schalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Angelini.
Yay.
Council Ortinger.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council David Cormier.
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. Like to point out for the record that the streets that I'm picking up from Ward 3 have been recently paved. Thank you very much, Council Cormier.
And all your stop signs are in place as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Okay, moving on to Ways and Means, we have only one, two of them have been continued because they didn't appear. But Mr. Riddlin did appear, so I'm gonna ask Councilor Cormier to address the Riddlin appointment.
Sure. Should we officially vote to give further time the other ones, too?
Sure, we can do that.
If we can, we'll take those two and block the first two. Michael Sici and Richard Gulick. I'll read both of those. So Dean J. Mazarello Mayer requests the appointment of Michael Sici of 270 Hill Street to the Conservation Commission term to expire April 15, 2024. And Dean J. Mazarello Mayer requests the appointment of Richard Gulick of 151 Old Farm Road to the Conservation Commission term to expire April 15, 2024. Both of them were not here this evening. We will get them here for the next meeting. And just for the record, the city clerk will be setting up an interview with Michael Sici at 6:12 PM on October 25, 2021, and Richard Gulick at 6:13 PM on October 25, 2021. And I would recommend that we give them further time.
Very well, you've heard the recommendation for further time. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Council Frida. Council Schalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Angelini.
Yay.
Council Ortinger.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council David Cormier.
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. The appointments of Michael Sici and Richard Gulick have been given further time. Moving on to the appointment of Kenneth Riddlin.
Dean J. Mazarello Mayer requests the appointment of Kenneth Riddlin of 514 West Street to the Conservation Commission term to expire April 15, 2024. We did have an interview this evening with Mr. Riddlin, and he is more than qualified for this position. He comes with a wealth of knowledge and experience, and we are very, very lucky to have him. And it would be my recommendation to confirm his appointment. And there is no one else on my committee for you to check, so that would just be my recommendation.
Well, we'll check with Council Frida.
Yeah, she's, that's right, she's on the phone.
Council Frida, are you in accord with the confirmation of Mr. Riddlin?
I am.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of Ways and Means to confirm the appointment of Kenneth Riddlin. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Council Frida.
Yay.
Council Schalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Angelini.
Yay.
Council Ortinger.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council David Cormier.
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of seven to zero. The confirmation of Kenneth Riddlin to the Conservation Commission has been confirmed. Moving on to C-14, is, are you, Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-14, Dean J. Mazarello Mayer requests that Mark Moebbe be exempt from the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, 20B, Conflict of Interest. This is regarding the city of Leominster employee and tennis coach for Lemmister High School. This is customary. We do this on a lot of occasions for employees, and it would be my recommendation that we grant C-214.
Okay, Council Frida, are you in accord?
Yay.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of Ways and Means to grant C-14. Any discussion? This will be by roll call. Council Frida.
Yay.
Council Schalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Angelini.
Yay.
Council Ortinger.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council David Cormier.
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. C-14 has been granted. Moving on to C-19, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-19, Dean J. Mazarello Mayer requests that the city council to accept the CARES Act Phase 2. This is regarding COVID funds for Phase 2. I am looking for, do we have any documents about this? I apologize, I was not expecting to.
David, right.
Be, I'm sorry. Oh.
Thank you, Council Angelini.
I might have it right here, but thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, we have a letter here dated September 21, 2021. I am not gonna read all of this this evening, but basically, the council accepted Phase 1 funding in the amount of $760,805, which was used for the schools to purchase 1,500 Chromebrooks and 200 hotspots. Fire department expenses related to COVID, excess rubbish, and recycling costs due to COVID, and computers for remote access for city departments. In January of 2021, the city council accepted $2,294,867 from Phase 2 of the City CARES Act funding. The bulk of those funds went to the school department for expenses related to additional computers, building, air quality upgrades, unemployment expenses, remote learning, and special education expenses. At this time, I am asking the city council to accept Phase 3 of our CARES Act funds in the amount of $631,766. These funds were spent on additional air quality measures in the schools, city and school PPE, testing and vaccine initiatives, and additional trash and recycling overages. I have attached a full breakdown of the expenditures for the total CARES Act allotment, and there is a couple-of-page breakdown here, which if the public has any questions or concerns or wants to see what it is, it is a public document available in the mayor's office. I mean, I'm sorry, in the city clerk's office. And it would be my recommendation, Mr. President, that we grant C-19.
Okay, I'm gonna check with Council Frida.
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Ways and Means to grant C-19. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Council Frida.
Yay.
Council Schalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Angelini.
Yay.
Council Ortinger.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council David Cormier.
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. C-19 has been granted by a vote of seven to zero. Do we need an order on that?
No.
No order required. Moving on to Public Service, Council Pauline Cormier. I think we've already established a public hearing. I think we just need to give it further time.
And that's what the recommendation would be.
Very well. And Council Frida, you're okay with further time on 9-22?
I am.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant 9-22 further time. Any further discussion? David has abstained, right.
Yes, thank you.
Seeing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Council Frida.
Yay.
Council Schalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Angelini.
Yay.
Council Ortinger.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of six to zero. 9-22 has been given further time. We have no new business, but we do have old business, starting with the second reading of an ordinance. Council Schalfo Zephyr, you prepared to proceed with 6-22?
Certainly. 6-22, City Council Vice President David R. Cormier requests to amend Chapter 13, Article 3, Division 2, Section 13-34, no parking on certain streets, and add the following: Regarding Tucker Drive, both sides from the intersection of Francis Street for 200 feet. They had a public hearing in September, the referrals have all been in, and I will go to my other committee person and see if he agrees with me that we should adopt the second reading.
I agree, thank you.
Legal Affairs recommendation is to adopt the second reading.
Very well, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to adopt the second reading of an ordinance, formally 6-22. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Council Frida.
Yay.
Council Schalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Angelini.
Yay.
Council Ortinger.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council David Cormier.
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of seven to zero. The second reading of the ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to 7-22.
7-22, City Council Vice President David R. Cormier requests to amend Chapter 13, Article 3, Division 2, Section 13-34, no parking on certain streets, and add the following:
Regarding Francis Street, both sides from Number 50 to Tucker Drive. Again, we've had public hearings on this, and this is a second reading. So my recommendation would be to adopt the second reading, and I will go to my other committee member.
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant, to adopt the second reading of 7-22. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Council Frida?
Yay.
Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Council Angelini?
Yay.
Council Ortinger?
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Council David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of seven to zero. The second reading of the ordinance has been adopted. Okay, I don't think we have any other old business. And we, the last thing we have on our agenda this evening, a busy agenda, the last meeting, I believe, we had a moment of silence for our departed Emergency Management Director, Jim LeBlanc. And I think there was a request to put on the agenda this evening for any reflections any of us have with respect to Mr. LeBlanc. He was obviously a very valuable member of our community and has given, has given 50 hours, 50 years, rather, of volunteer service to this city and a person who will be very hard to replace. Is there a member of the council that wishes to make a reflection about Jim's passing? Council David Cormier?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I was very shocked to hear the news of Jim's sudden passing on September 30th. And, you know, I've known him and much of the LeBlanc family, you know, my whole life. And you couldn't find a much more hardworking and dedicated person. He gave so much to the City of Leominster in his 50-something years of volunteering, and then a few years as being the director of the emergency management. As you said, he's going to be very, very hard to replace. And there is no question about it. You know, there were times, I'm sure, in his, in his day where he probably volunteered more hours in a week, you know, for the City of Leominster than some people who work and get paid full-time actually, you know, work, or worked, I should say. So, you know, I think, you know, I think, one of the things I think of is how much time he spent away, you know, from his family over those 50-something years. So, you know, we have to, we have to thank his family as well for sharing him with our community for all those years and allowing him to do such good work in taking care of so many people in situations when they needed help the most, whether they were, you know, they had a fire in their home, or a flood, or, you know, the hurricanes we've had over the years, blizzards, the ice storm, I mean, you name it.